Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for November 15th, 2021. All of our members are present with the exception of the mayor, and he's in Washington, DC, and excused. So the first thing on our agenda is to review the items on our agenda for tonight. So does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss?
I don't want to jump way too ahead of the council, but we do have a brief presentation. Sorry. I don't know that we've had an opportunity to share with council the 4O, the Dobson Ranch Library, just kind of show you what we're up to. You think council were ready, that'd be a good idea. So I didn't want to get ahead of the other items on here, but we have a staff presentation, just a few slides to kind of show you what is being planned for that. Could we do that now?
Yes, let's go ahead and do the library presentation. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Duff and council. My name's Polly Bonnet, the library director, and I'm here to give an update of the Dobson Ranch Library improvements, since it's been a little bit of time since you've last seen To recap the project, in 2018, voters approved 1.5 million in bond funding to update the facade of the Dobson Ranch Library and also add 1,800 square feet to the interior of the space, which would include ThinkSpot. That's a makerspace and a programming area with a studio. This slide that you see is Dobson Ranch with its current exterior as it was in 1987 when it was opened. So this is the new facade, as it would be following construction, and we're so excited to modernize this for the 21st century. As you can see, the walkway is wider and the entrance is more visible, as is the exterior of the library from the street. And then the windows that will be added along that south side look into ThinkSpot. So when visitors are arriving, they get to see the activity, the equipment, what's happening in ThinkSpot. And outside of the normal ThinkSpot users who are there for collaboration, we want to attract some of the park visitors and other library users to the space. This is another viewpoint in the evening, shows how nice the windows look. And here you see an aerial of the construction area. That's the first half of the slide on the left. We decided to expand out from the southwest portion of the building. It was the most cost-effective, and it was the least impactful to the interior of the space as it is currently. And then you see on the right side what that expansion will look like. And then here you have a floor plan of the existing space plus ThinkSpot, which is the additional 1,800 in square feet. And I do want to mention, currently, we have landscaping that designates Dobson as a monarch haven, and due to disruption from construction that will, we will be focusing on bringing plants back to encourage the designation once again when we reopen. And architects are using this opportunity to create a water harvesting feature, so we can use that in programming to talk about sustainability principles. And for this project, we do anticipate a 30-day closure when we begin construction, and that's slated for January at this time. Do you have any questions for me?
Counsel, Mr. Lanna.
So essentially, you're remodeling the exterior. Now, in terms of ThinkSpot, are you going to include new technologies? Is that a different bucket of money that will support that? How is that going to work? It's not part of this budget. Is that correct?
We have funds in our operational budget to purchase material for ThinkSpot and equipment, and we already have identified the different equipment we want to try.
Okay, so you'll include the 3D printer?
3D printer.
As well as the video equipment? You'll have a studio with lights and?
Right. Cameo.
Cameo, okay.
Glowforge.
Okay.
VR equipment.
All the editing equipment as well?
Yes.
Okay, the video editing equipment. Okay, but that's a different bucket, not this one.
We turned her.
Next time.
Maybe next time. Maybe next time. All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Ferretti.
What's the, you said 30-day closure. What's the anticipated opening of this? Is it in January?
For construction to begin, that's the goal, and then it would be seven months.
Seven months, okay.
From the start of the project.
So July-ish, July, August.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I know, as you show on this map, and not part of the scope of this project, but the restrooms also, I think, on the outside are definitely needed of some upgrade. I don't know if there's funds or resources where we can upgrade those restrooms on this, on the outside portion of the library.
So, Vice Mayor, Councilman Ferretti, I think what we should do, because we're so far along with this contractor and the scope of work, but it's a fair point, while we're doing this construction, let's, we'll talk about, maybe we ought to include that in the discussion during our budget coming up.
Okay.
I think Polly can add that to our list, and are we talking about the ones on that east end?
Highlighted in orange.
Right.
Over on that.
Right. So those are outweigh from really the most of the work being done on the building, so.
Yeah. But I think there is, they're pretty outdated and?
Right, no, I'm not saying that, not the need to do it, I'm just trying to figure out a way to, maybe to figure out a way to do it without interrupting?
Sure.
What's already going to happen. But we'll put, we can put that, we need to probably go get an estimate and have some discussions about that, but we can bring that back.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else on this item? Other items?
I do, Vice Mayor, I'd like to take 5F off the consent agenda. That's the redistricting commission.
Thank you.
Maybe for a little discussion. If there's not any, then we'll move forward with that. And also 6C. I've been in contact with our planning director. There's been some changes there, and we want to discuss that now or upstairs?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we do have transportation here to speak about our site plan, so whenever you're ready, we'll ask transportation to come speak to.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. You know, prior, I know that there was a pre-submitment some time ago, and I did receive some feedback from some people that lived in the area about the rate of speed and coming up the hill for this development. So thank you, Mr. Zeder.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Freeman, yeah, we understand that there were some concerns about folks coming off the Mesa, you know, making a left turn into the project from McKellup. So the developer has submitted a revised site plan that includes a median concrete island, AKA a pork chop, which will restrict the turning movements to right-in, right-out.
Good. Also, when the pedestrian light gets put in over the canal, does that prove any hindrance to this project at all?
No.
We're going to, no?
No, no hindrance.
Okay.
I've got my help here in the audience, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. I know that there's going to be a light there eventually.
There will.
When the multi-use path goes through, because that construction is supposed to be slated maybe for next year, I believe.
It is. It should be next summer that that all starts.
Okay. I just want, you know, as the projects move forward, they blend into each other, and there's no confusion with the traffic signalization, but the rate of speed is what I was concerned about and the other constituents in there.
We are good with that. The proposed median island will not otherwise affect, you know, the folks using the canal path.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So, Nana, does this mean that we can accept that now, or we want to do it upstairs?
Chairman.
Mr. Smith.
Vice Mayor and Council, if you'd like, and I don't know if you've all received the revised site plan, we can also provide it to you between the break before council, the formal council meeting, is that we could keep it on consent if you'd like, and we can always pull it off consent, and Mr. Christopher, when he reads it in, could be with the revised site plan as discussed at the study session. And so it's introduced with the revised site plan with the pork chop, and as discussed by our unit just a minute ago. And so if council would like to introduce it with staying on consent, with the revised type site plan, or you can always pull it off and have a discussion, and then vote on it separately with the revised site plan.
I just thought briefly. But the applicant has no problem if we do a continuance if we had to, is that correct?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the applicant would prefer that we move it for action on the first, so they will want this to go forward.
Okay, I'll review it between now and upstairs.
Was there anything else, Mr. Freeman, that you had? You had redistricting 6C and this one?
Yeah, those two. So 6C may remain on the consent agenda, we'll just?
5F, I believe. This is 5F on the Stapley project?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And it's only remain on consent unless you want to pull it off during council meeting?
True, yeah.
Okay. And then 6C, I believe, is the redistrict?
5F.
5F. I have a...
Well, I brought it up. I didn't know whether council wanted to discuss if they're all comfortable with the lines, and if they are, then, you know, I see yes or no's, or, I mean, this is the only way we could discuss it, right?
Please go ahead, Mr. ...
Yes, I'm comfortable with the redistricting the way it's presented, and I would urge my colleagues to support it.
They did have issues, but I voiced those last week about the section between, honestly, I thought that, my only feeling is that, that you should put the Crisman Creek neighborhood, keep it in District 6, so it's continuous district versus allowing the 60 to be the, you know, to really divide that entire community from the rest of its district, but I don't think that's going to change irregardless, so they's beating that horse.
Well, I know just from my comments is, you know, I sent it out to a lot of my constituents, and I really heard no feedback. So, other than there was some groups here in West Mesa that advocated for some other, you know, for their historic districts and things, so, you know, I'm okay with it. I think that as council members, we work really hard in our respective districts, and we know our areas really well, and some of them get, I guess, use the word selfish or personal, you know, that we like to, you know, keep them, but I know things change, and, you know, in another 10 years, then somebody else gets to deal with it. So with that, I'm okay leaving it on consent. I just want to have a discussion here at the table.
I'll just make the comment. I feel like the purpose of the districts are, there's two main ones, and one is to spread our councilmembers out across the city, which I think is a great thing, and then to also help our citizens know which councilmember they can go to, so they don't have to try to go to seven people, right? They can go to our councilmember, thus our assistants, to get help on certain issues. Other than that, we, every single time we make a vote, we're voting for things that affect the whole city, and so I just feel like that the redistricting commission did a really great job, super, super complicated to get all of these lines, and of course, there's things I think we would all love to change, right? Our own personal opinions, but I personally don't have any arguments, good arguments, for why any of the lines on my new district lines would need to be changed, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Any other comments on the redistricting? Mr. Lanna.
Just real quick, one of the things councilmembers Spilberry and I are going to do, I'm going to introduce her to part of my district I'm giving up, and I would urge my colleagues to do the same. If there's a special place that you really love of your district, that you are not going to be representing anymore, introduce the new councilmember, because we're all good councilmembers, and here's an opportunity to get to meet new people. I get skylined, and my colleague over here said, yeah, well, you know, there's some issues there, but you know, but I'm happy to get those and to work those issues out with those individuals, so. So I look forward to the redistricting.
Yeah, on that, he, there's an elementary school I'm picking up, and it's an elementary school that he loves and has worked with a lot, and so he's going to let me be a part of his project that he does every Christmas, so that I can get and make those connections with that elementary school. So I think that's the way it should work. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. And I'm also in support of the redistricting plan that we have. I know it's very difficult to absolutely get every line, every neighborhood, but I think they've done a great job in the commission and the consultants in keeping together communities that have a like voice. In my district, I feel that was accomplished by the historic districts and some Latino districts, so that I make sure that they are represented and heard. And I think each of our districts have different personalities, and I do like the idea of being able to have that bridge, so that you feel, you know, comfortable with the new. And we are evolving in, on council, right? We term out, and we have new councilmembers and such, and so it is always a handoff position. So if there's any other comments on redistricting, I guess we'll leave it on consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll leave it on consent. Other matters?
Excuse me, Vice Mayor?
Yes. Yes, Mayor?
Oh, hi, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm, I just wanted to voice my support, similar to what's already been said for the great job that the redistricting committee did, and I think each one of us would probably have drawn these lines slightly different, but that's okay. I think this has been, this is a great compromise, and so I just join in expressing support for the good work that they did, and I think this, I'm happy to see it remain on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much for taking the time from your busy schedule in DC to join us, so I appreciate your comments, and thank you for allowing me to sit in your chair temporarily.
Don't get too comfortable, I'm coming back.
No, I won't. You do a great job, and I, no hurry. Other, Mr. Thompson?
I have a question on 4N. I guess my concern is, did we not know that the electrical improvements were needed back when we did the bond, just a year or two ago?
I'm assuming this is from the first, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson. So this is an operating plant. The primary purpose of the large project we just completed about a year ago was to expand the capacity of the plant, and we needed to get that capacity online relatively quickly so we could meet the growing demands. As it is, when we completed the project, we did make it before we got through our capacity. Along the way, we found a number of things that needed to be rehabilitated. An operating treatment plant like this is under severe corrosive and environmental conditions, and things over time tend to wear out, as well as technology tends to change, particularly for electrical systems. We knew along the way we could do a certain amount of that with the project and still get everything done in time, so we did have, we do have a list of other projects that we'll be following. We were able to bring the previous project in under budget, which we're quite proud of, and I think we have something like $3 million left from that project that we'll be funding some of these projects as we go forward.
That was my, that was my next question.
Yeah, well, and this, so this is a, what we're doing is, we're doing upgrades or replacements?
Yes.
To the existing facility, which is now 15, 16 years old.
Yes.
And it helps that we have the new capacity, so if we ever have to shut something down in the first one, we can, we have the capacity now because of the new one. So this allows us that flexibility.
And I'm not concerned about the flex, or the flexibility or the expansion of the plant. My concern was that we're replacing an electrical system at the plant that we probably should have known about when we were doing the expansion of the plant, and we probably should have figured that into our cost. But as things change, after you build out, I get it, things change, and we all of a sudden identify, so my next question was going to be, do we have funding left over from the bond that we can utilize then to place towards this, these, this and many other of the smaller projects?
Yes, and there's also some operating funding available out of the RER budgets, right? The operating budgets as well.
Well, and Chris can speak to this. I mean, we've already identified more improvements to take place at this existing facility. This is just the beginning. Is that correct, Chris? Is there's more to come, right?
Right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson. So it's part of asset management, so we put all the focus on that large project with the expansion, and tried to bring in limited outlier-type things in that project. So year by year, we're going to have asset management needs, and this electrical system is an example of that, being around 15 years old for an electrical system, that's the expected useful life, so it was predicted, but just not included as part of that larger expansion.
But we have in the CIT additional improvements to the existing, or the original site, so you'll see more of these coming.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that we had the, because I knew we came in under budget and on time, or actually before time, and because of that, we should have had some funding left, and I just wanted to make sure that that's where the funding was coming from, so.
There is, and we do have a running list that we review with our partners in this project, so that they have their funding available at the time we need it as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Council, other items on today, tonight's agenda? I do have a couple of small questions. For I, on the Family Center, the Advocacy Center, are we keeping the current, we have a location, are we keeping that, or are we moving to three other locations?
So there, I think the answer, Vice Mayor, is that there's several improvements that need to be made, replacement of HVAC, electrical, a lot of remodeling that needs to be done at the Family Advocacy Center, and so we've identified some of those needs now, and so we need to find a place to relocate the staff during that time. This is pretty fresh, because this project is continuing to grow, and so we need to, we need to come back and talk about, this is becoming a much more significant project, but the good news is, we're going to find a place to relocate the staff, and it's not only a Family Advocacy Center, but there's other buildings out there that house other units for the police department. So we're building out the second floor of the Mesa Center for High Education to be a location for the staff. But as far as ultimately, we are assessing the feasibility of how much money do we put into this existing building versus looking at other options, because it's becoming a very significant project. It's just older, so it's grown from HVAC to, you know, ADA accessibility and electrical systems, so again, a very older building that we need, we're making that assessment today. But if the question, I think right now the intention is to ultimately go back to that location, right? With advocacy. When that will happen, and how much it's going to cost, those are conversations we're still having right now.
Okay, so this budget item is just on moving the staff?
This is to move them to the location where we have the offices that they'll reside in until we have this figured out.
Okay. And then on 4M, in sharing, I don't know if it's sharing the same contract on the testing of the water, how does that work? Do we, are we in a contract with other cities, or that each city holds their own contract? How does that work? Do we share a contract, or? This is Abendale, Peoria, Gossel, Tempe, Gilbert, Payson, Salt River Agriculture Improvement and Power District, also use the contract.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Council. So in the past, we have cooperatively used a contract that the city of Tempe established, but this year we took it over. So Mesa establishes the contract, and the other agencies are our partners, we have the contract with them, and then the other agencies use our contract.
So the answer is, it's a cooperative agreement. We're just the lead this time.
That's correct.
So we have the lead contract, and then the rest of these communities then purchase off of that same contract. So we kind of negotiate or procure the rates, and then the other cities are allowed to procure, buy the, use those services with that stated rate. So that's all it's doing.
So the $150,000?
That's just for, that's just for our?
That's just our portion, yes.
That's our portion. Okay, I see.
Each of them go to their governing bodies to get permission to use the contract as well.
Great, thank you. And so I have a lot of questions. Also, 5H, if I could just have a quick review on that, which is the dredging of the Bartlet I don't want anybody left out, you know? There's a big room, a lot of people. You might not have your turn.
This is a good, this is a good project. Is it Brian or Chris, or who wants to take this one?
Brian will start.
I'll go ahead and start this off. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, for the record, I'm Brian Draper, Mesa's Water Resources Advisor, and we come to you today with a pretty exciting project. It's on the Verde River. We did do an appraisal study over the last year and a half, looking at alternatives to replace volume in Horseshoe Lake that was lost due to sediment. Over the years, we've lost about one-third of the capacity in Horseshoe Lake, and so we're looking at a way to not only create a replacement for that lost capacity, but also increase capacity. And so we did, we did look at many options. One was dredging out the sediment out of Horseshoe Lake, and that was pretty cost-prohibitive. And the two alternatives that have kind of floated to the top that we're taking to the Bureau for more investigation is raising Bartlet Dam. One option is raising it 62 feet above where it's already at, and the other is 97 feet. And it, we hope to get the 97-foot increase there, because that does increase the volume there for all SRP users as well as new users. We're opening this up to 21 participating entities, and so what we're bringing forward to you today on the agenda is the cost-share agreement on how we're going to help pay for our portion of the cost of the feasibility study. Half is being paid by the Bureau, the federal government, and then the other half is paid by these 21 participating entities, Mesa being one of them. And so as part of the cost-share agreement, to have voting rights on the committee, you have to pay $100,000 a year for four years, which is the term of the feasibility study, or we could opt to only pay $30,000, and that just gets us a seat in the audience, and we don't really have a voice. This committee will ultimately decide how the water's going to be dibbied up, and that's why we're coming to you requesting the $100,000 per year, so we have a say at the table, and we can ensure that we're able to gain some of that additional capacity. Now, paying this $100,000 a year for four years does not give us a right to water. What it does do is it gives us a voice at the table to ensure that we get water at the end of the day, because there are these 21 entities, and I'll let Bill speak to some of that.
Well, to just follow what Brian said, first, it's a feasibility study, so there's some amount of, you know, review that still needs to be done. This agreement, as Brian said, doesn't actually sort of lock in supplies. Ultimately, if the feasibility study proves out and improvements to the reservoir are made, then the water supplies that could be, additional water supplies that could be made available will still be subject to the legal process to perfect water rights in Arizona.
Great. So the feasibility study will be environmental as well as capacity as far as the dam, if it is raised, whether it structurally can support the additional capacity?
Correct.
Okay.
There's an environmental impact study, and also the NEPA process that has to go through. There's also some historical and archaeological-type studies we have to do, because it will inundate a large portion of what's existing now around the perimeter of Bartlet Lake, and so if you can imagine a 97-foot, the lake will be just almost a Horseshoe Dam. We're not looking to take down Horseshoe Dam, it will stay in place as a sediment trap, so all that sediment doesn't end up in Bartlet, and so it will have a functional purpose, Horseshoe Dam, plus we maintain that habitat there, which is very huge, because if it is determined we're taking habitat in Bartlet Lake, we can show that all this extra surface area in Horseshoe is applicable for habitat.
Great. Well, thank you for the review. I know water retention and use is very important, and I apologize for saying dredging, it came to mind, but I do remember that it was just increasing the capacity, so I want to clarify.
No, you're... No, you're.
Not using those words.
You're right. When we met with you several months back, dredging was an option that was on the table in the appraisal study. Now we're just moving forward on raising the dam.
Thank you. Ms. Millsberry?
Couple of questions. Does that money that we're paying, that's what's paying for the feasibility study? And how many people are on the committee? Which is different municipalities or?
There's 21 participating entities, Mesa being one. It's most of the Valley Cities, I think Freeport-McMoran, there's Epcor, there's several participating entities. Just those that pay the $100,000 get to vote and have a say. There will be a few who only pay 30,000 a year just to be able to be there and present for the discussions. So this money does pay our half of the non-federal share of this study.
Great. Anything else on that item?
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes. Mayor, you interrupted me, I'm sorry. When you're not.
No, no, I, thank you. I just wanted to say this is the best dam project I've seen in quite a while. So thank you.
Thank you for that comment. We do miss your humor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Glad we didn't miss it this time.
Well, I have a message for the mayor then. If that's so well done, then bring the money back with him when he comes. All right?
I also would like to just note that item 5G is the public hearing notice for the Downtown Mesa Association to make recommended modifications to the assessment zones and formulas. And this is, will be an open and transparent process for the downtown property owners. But that is being introduced tonight. But I don't have any questions on it. I just wanted to make a note to it for anybody listening.
Yes. I have a study session.
So you don't have any additional questions at this time? Okay. I do have a comment on the business license, but I think we're going to be into a discussion possibly in that and councils. So should I hold that?
You can do it anytime you want. It's posted for off consent and we will have a brief presentation if council would like it. We can do it now or we can do it now and later, whatever council would prefer.
Any preferences?
I think one of the things we wanted to clarify, there were some questions about the information that would be available for public purview. And so we've been very clear that I think two different ways we will address concerns about personal information, home addresses and personal information like that. One, when we provide, when the database eventually gets developed, it will not be a searchable field for personal home addresses or phone numbers. But City Attorney's also mentioned we can also include a box to check off if people want to keep that information. What's the word? Anonymous? No. Confidential? So we could have both. So we don't plan on making the search filters available to look for that information and we would exclude that from our search fields. It would be mostly related to types of businesses, size of businesses, number of employees. Those are the kinds of things that we intended for. And then we'll give an option for individuals who are checking the, to check the box to not share the information regarding their home address and other personal items. So we can do that. We'll do both of those.
So can we review a little bit what public information will be available on?
Sure, we have, I mean, it's in the presentation. Would you like to see it now?
Sure.
Okay. Is Tim here? It's similar to the application you've already seen so that we haven't changed that that we presented to the council a couple of weeks ago.
Tim? I might change my mind. Why don't we wait and do all of this in council session? Because I think we have members of the public.
Sure.
Who will be speaking on this and then that way we can just do it one time and be clear on that instead of having to go through it twice and be more concise and we can wrap up this meeting.
Sounds great.
I apologize. Thank you.
It's okay.
Anything else on our agenda? Okay. Oh, we still have more information. The second item is the Mesa Moves Active Transportation Presentation.
So this is a follow-up from the conversation we had a few weeks ago or some weeks ago. The council asked us to come back with a prioritization of the projects that we had identified that were eligible under the bond program, Mesa Moves. And so I think RJ and Eric are here to share with you the efforts to try to prioritize those projects.
Yes, good evening. RJ Zeter, Transportation Director, and with me is Eric Gudarian, Deputy Director for Traffic Engineering. As Mr. Brady said, we're here to come back with a list of projects for council consideration. And our hope is at the end of the conversation, we'll get some direction on which projects we move forward with. So let's begin. Quick, you've seen some of this already, but just kind of a quick reminder of some of the information we've shared with council before. Just to put things in perspective for you, what active transportation infrastructure costs, sort of a full-blown path project with lighting, we're looking at $2 million a mile. And then street improvements, depending on the extent of the work, could be anywhere from $500,000 a mile to $10 million. It's a pretty big spread and really it's the amount of physical infrastructure that's being installed that drives the cost of those on-street projects. Just some photos. You all know Mesa better than I, but just what a shared use path off-street typically looks like. Complete streets, this is a, two photos. One is our stadium connector path and the picture sort of overlapping, but below that is in the Fiesta District. And this is an example, the first examples where we took out a lane of traffic and created a separated bike lane. We call this the cycle track in that there's two-way traffic. And then the other in the Fiesta District along Southern Avenue is where we also removed the lane of traffic but widened the sidewalk rather than doing an actual on-street improvement. So just doing a quick look, again, this is sort of where the system is looking out or what we have now, but also looking out into the future. So the blue line along with the blue dots are completed signal or path sections along with signals. And then the green would indicate the future network and also future signal locations in So we did do a survey of the community, which we mentioned in our last presentation. And the high-level feedback we took from that survey is that our residents would like, with pedestrians specifically, want more off-street pathways. Cyclists in general prefer both off-street and on-street paths, but do, would like to see separated bike lanes. Respondents prefer three-to-one, more pathway mileage with lesser amenities. So the way we framed this question was, did, would you like a shorter distance with more amenities or longer miles of improved path sections with fewer amenities? And as you can see, fully 75% of the respondents indicated they would do more pathway mileage with lesser amenities to the projects. What we'll do with these projects is connect into existing, the goal, I should say, of our analysis, and Eric will take you through that, is that we created a point system to achieve the goals that, from the feedback we received in the survey. So our projects, we are looking to connect into existing facilities, connect to parks and schools, connect to retail restaurants, focusing on off-street pathways along canal power lines and freeways, and again, focusing on maximizing mileage rather than amenities on the projects. And with that, I'll turn it over to Eric.
All right. So just really quickly and good evening. We have, this map shows the existing, or the projects that we were prioritizing. And these projects come from a variety of locations. First and foremost, our CIP as far as unfunded pathway projects. We also looked at the priority projects that came out of our master bike and ped plan that we have for the City of Mesa. And then we also received citizen feedback, not only through the survey. There was a group of citizens that came a couple of months ago to talk about a pathway. So we looked at all these projects that are in red and used the prioritization matrix to look at how they would score. So before you is this prioritization matrix. And we've identified the projects, both in green and orange, are the projects that scored the highest and we'll get to a map. But I just want to look at really quickly, the projects in green are projects that have already been studied with either a feasibility study or we've had discussions with SRP along the canal that these projects are ready to go into design and construction. We've identified two projects in orange that we think are good projects, but we need to do a feasibility study and really get into detail more what they involve. The first is the Center Street Complete Street Project that would connect downtown to the consolidated canal pathway along Center Street. And the second is then the Lehigh Crossing Phase Two Project. I think we found with the Phase One Project that the ADOT has had quite a bit more asks along that project than we were anticipating so that we'd like to do a feasibility study so we can know exactly what we're getting into. I just want to highlight then on the map of Mesa, these projects and where they are. You know, we've had a focus over the last 10 to 15 years of connecting through the consolidated canal, Gilbert, and then into Tempe. We are now moving east into the city along the Eastern Canal. We've identified two projects there. One from Brown Road to Broadway. We're currently designing all the traffic signal crossing locations. And that money or that project was actually funded with the 2018 Parks Bond. And so we'll be getting the signals. This project would then be creating the paved pathway. Another section of the Eastern Canal from Broadway south to baseline to connect into the Gilbert pathway that exists there. Then there's one along the US 60 right-of-way, the CEC project, which will actually connect the two canals. We've done a feasibility study and talked with ADOT and know what we're getting into there. And then in southeast Mesa, finishing off the Mesa Gateway Pathway along the 202 and connecting into the existing pathway that Gilbert has.
I do want to add before we move on to the next slide that this is not all inclusive. These are the projects that we would propose using the Mesa Moves money, the 20 million that was part of the Mesa Moves program. For example, there's a project that we're moving forward with in District Five, which is the Power Road Shared Use Path, and that has federal money. So that project is already funded, which is why you're not seeing it on this map.
So this is a quick summary of the four projects that we're recommending to move into design and then into construction. The project estimate right now is a total of $15.4 million. We have the two projects that we'll do additional feasibility study and bring back to council those findings and hopefully receive more direction when we have better information on those projects.
So with that, oh, please.
Thank you for mentioning about the federal money. Is there any way that you can show us where that's actually happening in District Five? I have a constituent that was concerned about why District Five wasn't included in this. And how did you arrive to, how did you prioritize other projects and not prioritize projects in District Five?
Go ahead, Eric. So Vice Mayor, Councilmember Luna, if you want to go back to the other map?
Which one?
That's good. So the blue dashed line in your council area that's labeled PPR is the Power Road Park and Ride. We're calling it the Red Mountain Shared Use Path. So we actually have, are the funding secured for that project. We're just working with engineering to begin design of that project and the construction money is in two years out for that. So because we already had the funding identified through the federal grant for that project, we have not included it in as far as, we're not looking for funding there. We know when that's going to happen.
So these are projects that are going to be funded by the Mesa Moves Bond Project? And you have federal monies that are going to be funding the one that's going up north, Power Road, is that right?
Correct. We also have federal funding on the South Canal Project as well, don't we?
Correct. Yes.
So those are in addition to the 20 million that's in the bond program?
So looking at, sorry, please.
No, no, go ahead.
So looking at this map that Eric pointed out, you'll see a dash line north of the consolidated canal path. That's called, that's the South Canal. That's got federal funding on it, so we're moving forward with that. Then we're moving forward with the project in your district, Councilmember Luna. And we're actually, we started construction on the Mesa Gateway Phase Two, is about to start construction.
Construction's almost complete.
Almost complete. I think that's all right.
Okay. Would you mind sending me that information?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I have a constituency that was concerned about why nothing was happening in District Five as it relates to the Mesa Move Program.
That's what I wanted to point that out.
I want to make sure that we provide, provide them the information that we do have projects underway.
Absolutely.
And they're getting another source of funding.
In addition, so specifically, we're here to ask for direction from council on the 20 million that has been set aside from the Mesa Moves Program. In addition to this, we'll be able to share with council in the next few months on-street projects that are not on arterial streets. You know, with the feedback that we've received, you know, we know that a significant portion of our community does not feel comfortable riding in arterial, you know, bike lanes. You know, you're looking at many times six-lane roadways or wider 45 mile an hour speed limits. So the staff has been doing quite a bit of work to look at the non-arterial streets to determine what additional on-street facilities, you know, we can provide. We've been in quite a bit of conversation with the Vice Mayor regarding our project on First Avenue. It's coming along. It will look a lot better once we get the paint and the delineators down. But I just wanted council to know that we're not forgetting that there is work to be done off the arterial streets. And those projects can be funded with operating dollars in addition to what we're discussing here.
So Mayor and Counsel, what you have then is, well, we're just letting you know is that we're going to move forward, what slide is that, 11? So with the design phase of those four projects and the feasibility study of the two below, and those are done as professional service contracts, so we'll proceed with those. And then each of those projects will come back to council as we get ready to do the construction side of it. So you'll see, you'll have one more opportunity to see each of the projects. But we are just making sure you're, we're on the same page as we move forward with the design. We can't do any construction, obviously. We need to do the design first for these first four and the feasibility, and then come back to council with the projects when they're ready to go out for bid.
Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Freeman has a few questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. You know, we have canals all throughout our city and I appreciate putting these multi-use paths on our canals. It kind of, it helps people be much safer as they travel in our community. How do we move something, like I have a lot of canals in District One and the consolidated South Canal is neutralized quite a bit. How do we move something to a feasibility study, like between McKellips to Gilbert Road on the Con South? I mean, we've discussed that before in the past, I know, Eric. And where are we at on that? Because, you know, we're going to spend quite a bit of money on these, the lights, for the crossing lights on the streets. And so we're, we know we're going to have a pathway sometime in the future in this area. Is it better to deal with it now in a feasibility study or later on, would you get more angst with it?
I think probably the answer is a little bit of both. And I think it's really just prioritizing and how much we can design and construct it at one time. Historically, MAG has had a design concept report grant that cities can compete for for projects to do feasibility studies. And we try to do one of those a year. So essentially, it's getting it put on the list so that we can look at that.
Well, you said you've got 15.4 million spent out of 20 mil?
That's identified. We'd obviously like to see both the Center Street Project and the Lehigh Crossing Phase Two, you know, be included also. So we'll be also looking for additional construction money with federal grants for these projects as well.
It's safe to say to do all of these six projects.
We'll be over.
Will not happen with 20 million dollars. So we're going to be outside the 20 million just with these six. And then as we come back, maybe with federal funding or another bond program, then we would go through the same exercise that got all of these projects on it where we went through the community effort, talked to council, did the evaluation of the prioritization you saw at the beginning where we're connecting projects. You're also seeing we're trying to spread the projects across the city. We did a lot in West Mesa and the. We did a lot in West Mesa in the previous bond program as we're trying to move a little further east and north and south in this program. So we're trying to be both connected as well as dispersed.
Expanding.
That's fair.
Well, I know I've talked to staff about this, but you know, we put together projects and we kind of start in the middle, and then we build out where, you know, I'm trying to fill in the gaps of, because you've got multi-use paths, I'll just say, in D1 at Brown and Horn and on the Eastern Canal and the Tempe, or the connector path for the stadium, stadium connector path. And then we're building the new one north-east, I guess, on the Con South, down to McKellips. And then there's a gap, and then we're spending a lot of money at McDowell and Lehigh Road to put in a new trailhead and all that out there. So Mr. Brady, I appreciate you spent a lot of money in West Mesa. We just needed to continue.
Yeah, well, it's again, we would love to do all the projects, don't take me wrong. It's just we're trying to fit everything inside of 20 million, and that's what we kind of presented to the council. And obviously, I think we've presented you lots of projects that, on that sheet five, right? And there's a lot of projects there that eventually someday we'd like to get to also. So it's just, at some point, we have to say, let's move off-center, let's get moving with designs, we get the projects done. But as we get, as this program going, again, we'll see federal dollars, MAG dollars, and we'll be able to bring other projects forward to council.
Well, just for consideration, let's talk for the future and how we can navigate and leverage this portion for at least a feasibility study so we can decide what we need to do.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we are always looking, as Mr. Brady points out, other sources of funding. So that's why I wanted to point out those other projects that are going on, because if you just look at the snapshot of what we're talking about tonight, it doesn't give the full picture. You know, we've got a very dedicated team in Bike Ped. They'd love to build this whole network out, you know? At $2 million a mile, it's going to probably take us a little bit of time to do it, but...
Sure. And some of these projects will have less amenities. I'm going to use that word because you've said that. They want more mileage, you know, versus, you know, with less amenities. All right, thank you.
And we don't have a timeframe on any of this until it comes back to us then, correct?
Well, with the direction that we hope you'll give us tonight, these projects will be programmed in the upcoming capital improvement program. So the direction tonight is helpful, since the budget conversations are not that far away. But this is something we'll be working on for many years.
So, but as far as, yeah, so as far as like a completion on the three different ones in my district?
We can now, we will move forward with design.
Yes.
On these projects. And then we'll, once that design, it will take six, nine months? I don't know, depending on which project is, what is typically, how long does it take?
Typically, because we're building on either ADOT's property or SRP's property, it's taking somewhere between a year and two years to do.
Yeah.
Just the design?
Just the...
Well, it's because we have to get their approvals.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Who do I need to talk to?
Maybe somebody on their board, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
But with your directions, Mr. Brady says, we'll get going with these projects.
Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to add my support. I think this is really something that our community appreciates. I think we all have been on these Bike Ped paths along the canals, and it really is a unique and wonderful thing about Mesa. And it has been noted, the challenge here is we only have $20 million to spend when this is $2 million a mile. We could spend our entire $100 million bond package on these projects, and the public would love it. But I just want to voice my support, and I agree with really the sentiment that was expressed in the, by, I think, a three-to-one margin in the outreach, which is, let's do everything we can to get the most miles for the buck that we can. And I think what that means is the canal bank Bike Ped lanes, even though a lot of the other ideas are very worthy of consideration. But anyway, I just wanted to chime in and say that I appreciate the work that's been done on this, and like the rest of you, would love to see this happen sooner and later, but sooner than later. But let's buy as many miles of Bike Ped canal bank trails as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Heredia?
Yeah, we'll put a question on, how does, do we have a program around technology? How do we, how are we overlapping technology, kind of more interactive? I think in previous presentations, we want to have folks move, move folks to placemaking opportunities within our city utilizing these paths. So it's, I think, larger scope on where we have bike paths and what we're developing as we move forward. Are we integrating enough technology, that type of innovation, so that people can map their, you know, bike route or wherever they want to go? And we can, you know, take folks to, you know, Asian District or Fiesta or out east or different parts of our city that they can connect to the, you know, mapping function that is more interactive. Is that part of the discussion as we move forward with this, this project?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, it's not part of what we're discussing this evening. I know you mentioned this to me before, and I have not forgotten that. The only tech now, real technology that we use right now is to use counters on a lot of our paths, so we have a sense of how many folks are using them. We have not gone as far as you suggest, so that's something we'd have to take a look
Good suggestion. Would that even fit into the Smart Cities initiative? I know we're doing public outreach on that, or is that purely in transportation?
Well, anything, I mean, Smart Cities is a pretty big umbrella of things that the city is undertaking. So I would say yes, it would fit under, under that.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I know an infrastructure bill was being signed today in DC, and there's a large allotment for transportation. I know it's early, and we don't have, we're waiting for the details on that, but I do hope that we're able to use some of those infrastructure dollars in our active transportation to speed up the projects that we have, and also put attention to so many others that we need and want. And speaking for my district, I have, I'm going back to slide five. We can see that there's a lot of green pathways, bike lanes around the city, but there is a void, especially around, say, between Country Club to Cooper or Stapley and, you know, a 60 to... And this is our, this is an area where people need active transportation to depend on transportation themselves. They may not have a car, and there is public transit options, but connecting to this public transit options by biking and walking. So I know we've talked about it before, but I wanted to restate that, being a priority with an equity lens of how do we serve those who need it the most? Also, I'm going to put a shout-out for District Three on that Dobson corridor and seeing what we can do on a complete streets project along the Asian District. I think that's a great opportunity. But I, we cannot have enough active transportation. I do like these projects as far as connecting around the city. And, oh, I had one question about the feasibility cities. Are they both going on simultaneously, or is it one after the others, the Center Street before the Lehigh, or?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't do the feasibility studies at the same time.
Okay, okay. We're building a lot of density, of course, in our downtown, and I wanted to make sure that held a priority on that feasibility study.
We keep our engineering folks busy.
Yes, yes, very much so. Any other comments? And do we feel comfortable moving forward with this recommendation? I think we have, yes, we, please proceed with your recommendation on Mesa Moves Transportation Plan. So we're getting closer. The third item on the agenda is to acknowledge receipt of various minutes. Is there a motion, Mr. Luna? And a second by Ms. Spilsbury? All in favor? Aye. And any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And next part is meetings and conferences attended. Anybody would like to share anything?
I wanted to beat him for once.
Okay, Mr. Freeman, I'll get your word in.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna. This Saturday, I'm going to host a barbecue at the Mesa Historical Museum from noon till about 1:30. So if you, if you're in the area, come by for a good barbecue down at the museum. And it's going to share a lot of information about it and the history and about the museum. Last week, the mayor and I toured Jacob's Hope. I was not familiar with this nonprofit, but they are a clinic for newborns who are suffering from neonatal abstinence syndrome or withdrawal from prenatal exposure to drugs. And it's a medically nurturing facility, caring for infants while the drugs leave their system. It was good to be with those ladies that are so passionate about it and the nurses. And last week, I had the rare opportunity to do the new traffic air control tower at Phoenix Mesa Gateway with Councilmember Spilsbury, who climbed all the way to the top, and I thought she was not going to make it down. But it's pretty impressive.
We got to sign a beam up there. It's pretty cool.
Yeah. And then I got to attend CC's Hope, and you can explain that a little bit better. But that was all a busy week, so thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Oh, I have so much stuff. Do you want to go first?
Yeah. I think we, thank you, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. I think we participate, participate in a number of projects together. But I do want to say that the chamber hosted the Aviation Fascination at Falcon Field Airport, an amazing event. We had a lot of children, and we had a lot of adults really taking advantage of the aviation that we have at Falcon Field Airport. And we do want to thank Boeing. They brought an Apache helicopter, an attack helicopter, and it's always a lot of fun. So we appreciate Boeing for their continued sponsorship of that event. I also attended the Wings of Flight Foundation Gala, along with Vice Mayor Duff and the mayor. And it was in honor of the Falcon Field Airport 80th anniversary. And they showed a really cool video of some of the pilots that were, actually were there. They're, they're like 100 years old, and they videotaped them in England. And they spoke about Falcon Field and the difference between the weather and where they lived. But it was fascinating video, so when they completed, we ought to show it here just to, so that we can truly appreciate Falcon Field in terms of what it meant to Mesa history and their contributions towards the award efforts. And then I'll let you share the other stuff that we did together.
Please go, go ahead. We all have tons of stuff.
I know. We had a lot going on on our calendars. A really fun thing, Hartwood Montessori sent some students over sixth grade through eighth grade, and Councilmember, Vice Mayor Duff and I met with them and showed them council chambers and answered their questions, and that was a really fun experience. And they had really great questions. I love working with those teenagers. And as Mark said, I am on a nonprofit board for CC's Hope, which helps girls, victims of sex trafficking or aging out of foster care. We had a big fundraiser dinner, and most of the councilmembers and mayor and Chris Brady were able to attend, and I really appreciated the support. And I wanted to give a big thanks to Chief Cost, who was on a panel with the Gilbert Police Chief and the Chandler Police Chief, and discussing those important topics. So that was a great night. We attended, some of us attended the Alice Cooper Solid Rock Finals Competition at the Mesa Arts Center, which was incredible. I was only, yeah, it's called Proof in the Pudding, and I was only able to be there for about half of it. I was, I need to find out who won. It was really, really impressive. Those, those kids are super talented. And then most of us were part of the Veterans Day Parade, which was incredible and so fun, super well-attended and a really neat experience. I'll save those two for you, Jen, and then I just want to give a reminder that tomorrow is Turkey Tuesday. The city of Mesa is partnering with United Food Bank for the Great Turkey Tuesday, November 16th, at the Mesa Convention Center, which is at 263 North Center Street, from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And the goal is to collect 1,500 turkeys and $10,000 in cash donations to help the less fortunate this holiday season. So grab a turkey and drop it off at the convention center tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Just a reminder for District Six that we have the Station 221 opening on Saturday morning to the public. So encourage everyone to come out and hang out, check it out.
Mayor, do you, do you have anything that you wanted to contribute?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Duff. I think you did, thank you for allowing me to join the meeting. I am, as you may have indicated, at the signing of the bipartisan infrastructure bill that was at the White House a couple of hours ago, hours ago on the lawn for that, with the members of our congressional delegation had the opportunity to talk to several of the cabinet members and others about projects in Mesa. And this is going to be a big deal for Mesa. In the short term, we're going to see the expansion of gates at our terminal at Gateway Airport. But this really historic event, again, in bipartisan fashion, is going to provide the funds that we need to do a lot of infrastructure projects in and around Mesa for years to come. So really happy that I could be here to celebrate that and to make sure that Mesa plays a role in how these funds are going to be distributed. Also, Vice Mayor, I appreciated joining with you on Sunday at the annual RAF Cadet Memorial Service at the Mesa Cemetery. That's always a very special event, and this year was no exception, and appreciated you joining me there. So thank you. I'll be back in Mesa tomorrow and look forward to joining you on Thursday.
Thank you, and thank you for representing Mesa and Washington DC as a significant city and part of the infrastructure bill as far as how we'll be utilizing it. And safe travels back. Mr. Heredia, did you have anything? I didn't want to skip over you. Okay, I'm just going to mention a couple other things that I attended. On last Monday, the 8th, I attended the Veterans of Washington Escobedo Exhibition Ceremony, recognizing the Buffalo Soldiers and their contribution, and the veterans in the Washington Escobedo from the neighborhood and in our armed forces over the years. So that was really powerful. Let's see, also, on Friday night, I feel like there's something else in between, but it'll come to me later. On Friday night, I attended Eagles Community Center First Annual Fall Festival. It was lots of fun. All the kids came and were able to have a lot of activities and joining the community together. On Saturday morning, I went to Beverly Park, and we planted 10 trees and providing more shade in our parks with Arizona Sustainability Association. I might have messed up that association name, but I really appreciate their efforts and what they're doing. And there's another tree planting going on this Saturday in your district, in Whitman Park.
51 trees.
Yeah, and that'll be concluding the project where trees would have been planted in parks across the northern part of our city. Also, on Saturday, a very exciting, we did a groundbreaking for Eco Mesa. That's a downtown project for sustainable living, its apartments, built over a parking lot on Pepper Street between Robson and McDonald's. Significant in the way it is sustainable and the way it's, will be a remarkable project that people will come to see and want to be part of. And I think everything else has been covered mostly by everybody. So we'll just leave it at that for right now. Mr. Brady, I think we're up for what you might have ahead.
All right, just remind council, we are meeting this Thursday, and then we will be able to, we have quite a few items, but we'll finish in time so that council can then attend the opening of the ceremonial, opening of the fire station 221 at 10:30 that same morning. So we'll meet here, and then we'll head out to Eastmark. Thank you.
Okay. So unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn the council. Mrs. Spilsbury has the motion, and Mr. Thompson seconded. I'm just grabbing. All those in favor of adjournment? Aye. And any...